Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us at our December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you to all who attended the town's thirty-first annual Christmas tree lighting on December second. It was a great turnout and the event was a great success. Thank you to the trustees of the Veterans Memorial Park and Millville Fire and Rescue for their continued support of the town's tradition. The Board of Selectmen appointed an interim building commissioner last week, James Sheehan. Mr. Sheehan can be reached by calling the normal building department telephone and email. Due to a previous, excuse me, due to a previous personal commitment, he will not be at the town hall this Wednesday night. Reminder, the town offices will be closed Wednesday evenings, December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, as well as two Thursdays for Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And the Board wishes everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And remember, the kids will be out on the streets in the next, within the next week, so just keep your eyes open while driving. That's it for announcements. Next we have the minutes for December first, two thousand fourteen, at seven P.M.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for December first, seven P.M.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, John, you were absent, sorry, at that meeting.
Was I?
Yep.
So I'll make the motion to accept the minutes, and I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is December tenth, five P.M. And Mr. Baker was absent.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for December tenth, at five. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Warrants.
I do. I've got the payroll for the period ending December thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. The vendor warrants dated today, December fifteenth, in the amount of ninety-four thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. That's a little higher than usual because there's trash and recycling fees in there. And then the payroll deductions from the last payroll of December first, in the amount of five thousand, three hundred eleven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve warrants, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have reports of town officials. First on the agenda is the zoning board.
Good evening.
Good evening, selectman. I have a few bullet point items to go through, and I have a copy here for you, and I have a more detailed report for you as well. Through the calendar year of two thousand fourteen, the Board of Appeals held three variance requests. Those are the only three that we actually had any requests for. There were people that did question the need, if they needed a variance, and we worked with the building inspector on those other conditions where they might not have needed a variance request. The three that we, that were put in, excuse me, two of the variance requests were actually withdrawn without prejudice. They decided during the process of the variance request that they were not going to most likely get a favorable opinion from the board for that decision. During that process, they were allowed to withdraw the request without prejudice so that in the future, they may come back before the board for another request.
Okay.
So those were withdrawn without prejudice requests, and those variance requests were then closed at that point. Now, they can still come back to the board at any given time to, for another request if the line item changed, what they're trying to do.
Okay.
The third request was actually granted with special provisions for that, and that has been since filed with the Registry of Deeds by the petitioner. Those requests are good for one year, calendar year. If the petitioner fails to act within a year, they can come back to the board before then and ask for an extension for up to six months. At that time, though, after six months, it will expire and they'd have to come back in for another variance request, even if, even though it was granted originally.
Okay.
So the total fees collected through the calendar year of two thousand fourteen were nine hundred dollars for the three requests. Even the ones that are withdrawn without prejudice, we do collect the fee because a hearing is held for them. The Board's currently working on revamping the variance application. It's kind of dated and doesn't really give enough informative information to the petitioner on what they really need to do, and what the Board's requirements are when they do come for an petition. So we're working on getting that variance application changed with a lot more information, and then we'll also have an F.A.Q. page that goes with it. People have any frequently asked questions that they might start the process with. That's going to be available here at the town hall, and then once we get it done, we want to actually put it onto the website, so people can get onto the website and look at it there. That would include the Board's requirements by law of how and when they have to have a hearing, how long it takes for a hearing. People don't understand that usually there's almost a ninety-day process in a variance request, so some of them think it's a lot quicker than, than what it really is. Right now, the variance request fee is three hundred dollars. That was raised last year by the Board of Selectmen. That's sufficient. We feel that's, it's an adequate fee right now, and it, we believe, once we hit four variance requests in a year, it usually pays for the board.
Okay, good.
In all of its things, so it's a three to four request break even for the board where the town is not taking money out for the board.
So there's enough money that covers all the advertising and the...
The advertising, yeah, so it's inside the fee.
Yeah.
Advertising, I know, now going through the television and Gazette is going to be cheaper, which will help a lot. So three to four variance requests, and then the board is pretty much, you know, it's not negative to the town in what they're doing as far as the budget.
Good.
Right now, we are working on the budget. I think our current budget is six hundred and ninety-nine dollars a year. So we're going through the line item process. I believe last year, we only used five hundred dollars of that budget, because we didn't have a lot of, we had leftover supplies in postage from previous that we continue to use.
Okay.
So I'm sure that money just went back into the general operating fund at this point. So we're probably going to be looking at about the same six ninety-nine budget following the about, we're getting it to the secretary before the thirty-first.
Yeah, good, excellent. Great. Thank you very much.
Any concerns or issues going forward?
Right now, no. I think as far as, you know, most of the requests we're seeing now are additions, setback variance requirements. We don't foresee any need for additional funding. We don't think that the, we're going to have any expenditures beyond that, because it's all, you know, our variance requests, whereas we're not going out with it. And with the new application process, people are going to know what they need before they come to the board, before they decide to even put a request in for it, so that they understand, you know, from the very start, what's going on with the process.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
You too. Mr. Clark's not here yet. All right. Lisa LaRue could not attend tonight, but she asked if I would read her report for the Treasurer Collector. Our collection rate continues to be successful. As of December eleventh, the collection rate of the fiscal year two thousand fourteen real estate tax is ninety percent, ninety-seven percent, sorry, and the collection rate for the two thousand fourteen personal property tax is one hundred percent. As of December eleventh, the collection rate for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, first and second quarter real estate is ninety-one percent, and the collection rate for two thousand fifteen, first and second quarter, personal property tax is one hundred percent. Third and fourth, fourth quarter bills will be mailed out by the end of December and will be, and will be due by February second and May first. Reminder, reminder notices will be placed in the one socket call and the Worcester Television. Notices will also run on the town cable. Kelly and Ryan, the town's deputy collector, continues to print and mail motor vehicle excise bills and, and demands. This service is free of charge. The only cost to the town is for the postage. Marsha Farrell, the assistant collector, continues to be a great asset to the Treasurer Collector's office. And that's it. There is one unknown tax title property on the list, which is one oh nine, twenty-three zero, ninety-two Hill Street, which has presently, which is presently in land court, the last step in the foreclosure process. I recently advertised two properties for tax taking and will be recording the instruments of taking with the Worcester Registry of Deeds this month. The properties will be added to the December tax title report. I presently have, have payment agreements for the property owners on the tax title list. Since December two thousand thirteen, six tax title properties have been paid off and redeemed. There are thirteen properties on the tax title list that qualify as land of low value properties. I have highlighted them on the spreadsheet. Over, and these spreadsheets are available at the town hall if anybody would like to come down and look at them. Over the winter months, I will be putting together a list of properties that qualify as land of low value properties. The Department of Revenue must review and approve each property. As of two thousand fourteen, a property must be valued at less, at less than twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars to be considered for approval. As soon as the D.O.R. gives, gives this approval, these properties can be sold without going through the long and expensive process of land court. As soon as I get several properties approved for the D.O.R., I will schedule a land of low value auction with my tax title attorney. These small properties are usually purchased by the butters of the... And that's it, from Lisa LaRue. So thank you to her and her department for their work. That's a nice collection rate. That's good to see.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, Ellen. Tonight, we come before you with smiles on our face. A number of years ago, the Board of Selectmen established what is now known as the Millville Green Energy Committee. During that time, we have met many times, worked with our state Department of Energy Resources, a number of people at the state, and we have now successfully been able to announce to you that Millville has been designated by the State of Massachusetts as a green energy community. And having done that successfully, we, the Green Energy Committee, would like to present to you what we received at the State House. A check in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Beautiful.
This money will be going to pay for pro, energy saving projects that we have identified within our application to the state. We're in the process now of moving that forward. Also presented to you, and I pass this on to you as the chairman, Board of Selectmen, the certificate from the State of Massachusetts designating us as a green community.
Nice.
Also, there they gave us four, I think it was, four of these signs that they indicated, very seriously indicated, should be posted at our town limits as you come into the town, identifying Millville as a green energy community. So, and Chief Landry has those in his office. What we'd like to do to you is make our recommendation in going forward, and we would like to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, the establishment, or that you establish a, a new working committee to be called the Green Community Committee. This committee should be made up of a minimum of at least three, three new members, and at least a member of the existing Green Energy Committee. I know that there are two members of the Green Energy Committee who wish to be appointed to that new committee already.
Okay.
I think one of them is Mr. Repulso, who has done a tremendous amount of work, and also Ms. Trish Bonet, Bonet.
Okay.
She's made indications that she would like to continue on, okay? We would recommend that within this, when you establish this new commi, committee, that you establish within that committee, members of that committee as a subcommittee. The, and I'm going to allow Mr. Repulso, if he doesn't mind, to indicate what that charge would be for the new committee that we, that we recommend.
I will make a motion. I don't know if I, is appropriate this time, or...
It's further on the agenda. I think the first order of business for the board would be to disband the current energy committee, and then they can certainly vote to create and appoint the new.
Yeah, we'll do that later on in the agenda, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's it.
Yep, and each of the members have the new charge that was on the desk this evening.
That's right after the first move.
Okay. Then you will take care of that, reading that at the, at the appropriate time. And our last recommendation was, and you already have it on your agenda, was the disbandment of the present Green Energy Committee. That, that being said, I would like to, at this time, recognize the members of the Green Energy Committee, which were Joe Repulso is our vice chair, Mr. Jerry Finn is our secretary, Trish Benoy is a member, and Chief Ron Landry as an alternate member, and also Joe Layden, the town planner, and at the beginning, Kristen Anderson was also appointed to the committee and worked with us until she was unable to continue and dropped out. I would like to say that I have never in my life seen two people who worked so hard on a committee, as did Mr. Repulso and Trish Benoy. Those two individuals have put forth so much effort in filling out applications, in filling out Excel, Excel forms and spreadsheets, and identifying things. It is just unbelievable, the amount of work that those two individuals did, and I applaud them both, and how they did it, I don't know, but this town can be extremely grateful to all the members, especially them, but other members of the Green Energy Committee. And that's what we have to say, unless Mr. Finn or Chief would like to say something or...
Would I say something? Just, I, I thank you for the recognition. However, going forward, just to inform the town and the board, the next step in this whole process is by, by the evening of, of January fourteenth, we need to submit the justification for, for the hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. In that, in that application grant, there are six exterior lighting projects to cover municipal buildings, including this building, the police station, fire station, so. And Mr. Barrett certainly were, are familiar with exterior L.E.D. lighting. There are, there's one motor control for the project for the elementary school on the walk-in freezer, roof insulation project for the fire station, weatherization projects on all the town buildings. So that be covered in the first phase. An important element is that I'd like to recognize the initiative of public safety in the police department, in that the very day we picked up that check at the State House, Mr. Davis and I drove up to Marlboro and we picked up a new hybrid cruiser. And I understand that the chief is satisfied with his performance to this point, and as part of that, this, this committee going forward will be looking to install idle control systems on cruisers and the ambulance. So that's what we get to look forward to, and it is a, a larger piece in all of this is that public education is, is important. Let the townsfolk in on or participate in energy reduction programs. So that'll all come out in the charge, I would motion it in a little bit later, but a, a piece of that is to get involved with National Grid and other, and I believe Mr. Barrett has a communication from National Grid to be in contact, to look at projects going forward. So I thank everyone.
Yeah, one, one other thing I wanted to mention also was that it, it is our recommendation to the board that the, we should put into the annual budget this monies and have it in a separate line item. Because of the reporting requirements by the state, we need to keep it segregated so that perhaps we could get a hold of the accountant and have her put that in there, and have it put it in there as a separate line item, clearly identified, and it will be something that will have revenue in and monies pulled out. We have to keep that accounting to make that work, so we recommend strongly that you suggest that we put that in as a separate line item in the annual budget.
All right.
We don't want to get, get mixed up in the, with all the other monies, and all of a sudden, you can't account for it. You have to account for it quarterly with the state.
Right, okay.
The only other thing is, is Joe mentioned, the, the key to this is that this is the, I think there's twenty-three projects that you had mentioned originally.
Initial phase, sixteen projects.
So I think you had asked before as to whether or not this would cover all the projects. No, this will not. What will is that this will get us a good start with these, these funds, the hundred forty-three thousand. Just to give an example, Mendon is about a year and a half ahead of us in terms of their process, what they've gone through, and Mendon has gone through the competitive bid cycle, the second cycle, to finish some of theirs, and they were just awarded two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars to finish up some of their projects. So this is where the second round of funding comes from, and as you can see, these are, I guess the maximum you can get is two hundred and fifty on competitive grants going forward. That will help us to finish some of these projects within the five-year horizon we're looking at, but that's, that's really what the, the second round of this is. This is the first round to get us started.
Great. James Glitz?
I would like to say, one last thing I'd like to say is, as Mr. Repulso mentioned, he and I went up in to Marlboro and brought back that first hybrid vehicle, and they went over it and showed us all the lights and whistles and all of that thing, how it worked. And Mr. Repulso and I, they had to finish up some items on the, on the vehicle, and so he and I left, and we came back, and the gentleman there, representative of the company, says, okay, it's all yours, and handed me the keys, and he says, you just go out here to the right and run out, and on the way home. I said, fine. So I got in and I stuck the key in, and I turned the key, and I, and I tried to turn it, and it wouldn't turn. And I said, well, this is embarrassing, you know, and waved at the guy, and he come over, I said, what's the matter? I said, it won't start. He said, it's running. And I looked at him, I says, what? He said, it's running. I said, it didn't start. He said, it's running.
Step on the gas.
He says, put it in drive. I put it in drive and it started moving forward. Well, I drove it back, and it was, it was an experience. I mean, it is the quietest vehicle I have ever ridden in in my life. I get back, we park it out here, and we turn the keys over to the chief, and chief says, how was it? I says, great. And he says, you really like it? I said, yeah, you ought to try it. He gets in it, puts the key in, turns it, says, it's not, it won't start. And I told him, I said, it's running. He says, no, it's not running. I said, yeah, it is. Put it in reverse. And he puts it in reverse, he got this look on his face, going to start backing up on him. You don't know that it's running. You don't hear it at all. And the nice thing about it is that when you stop and we, our police officers are sitting there watching traffic or whatever, it's not running. It will only start running when the battery gets alo, to a certain point, level, and then it will kick back on and recharge the battery. But it is, once it's lit up with all the lights on it, it looks like a, oh gosh, a double-lit Christmas tree. It really is some type of vehicle, and I think we're going to really enjoy them.
Also, the video that Jesse and I did, he finished it tonight, actually, so it's going to start airing this week.
So there's a, there'll be a video of it on the table, but anyway.
Quite impressive, I think.
Yeah.
In this region of the country, we're probably the only small town that has...
I think it's something we can be proud of, and like you said, it's, there's not many of them out there, and we're one of the first.
Awesome.
And the chief was getting forty-nine miles to a gallon.
That's pretty cool. That's good. Wish I got that on my truck.
What were you getting before chief decided, you also, twelve, fourteen of the pound bags?
Twelve, twelve to fifteen.
Eight, that's crazy, but what a difference, huh?
That's a lot of fuel.
So you're going to give us another return on your budget.
I was hoping to keep some.
Anything else we can answer your questions for you, gentlemen?
No, last job, well done. Yeah, I'd like to thank all, your whole committee, everybody, for all, all the dedication and, and for that great achievement for the, for this town. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. We, we're happy doing it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Clark said he was coming?
He did say he was coming.
He what?
Not quite sure if he wants to.
Well, we'll give him to the end of the meeting and.
Okay.
That's the flag award, so. Um, so first, public forum. Correspondence, uh, well, I was gonna mention the Blackstone van, but you're gonna bring that in your report, don't you?
Yes.
Alright, so appointments and resignations. As we were just speaking about, the Green Energy Committee, we're gonna disband and we're gonna create a new committee called the Green Community Committee. Joe, if you'd like to.
I'll make the, uh, motion to disband, uh, the, uh, Green Energy Committee. The original charge was, uh, the purpose of the Green Energy Committee is to study and recommend energy savings and green energy plan for the town, as well as identifying, investigating and prioritizing significant energy incentives for the town of Millville. That was accomplished, uh, and, uh, so we, we now can move forward. So I would like to propose a new charge and a new committee in motion to continue the work of the previous committee, including but not limited to educating the town of Millville on clean energy options and measures that can be implemented to reduce energy use, conserve resource and reduce emissions. Assisting in the development of cost-effective projects on municipal facilities to reduce energy and resource use. Developing renewable energy sources, investigating opportunities to develop programs and projects to foster energy conservation, energy efficiency, renewable energy generation and sustainability planning going forward throughout the community. promoting awareness of new technologies and their potential impact on energy use and, uh, resource conservation. Interacting with the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, researching, applying for and administering appropriate grants, ensuring the town retains its status as a designated green community and submitting annual reports to the Board of Selectmen. Now, this is the difficult part. Membership. The committee talked about this. And, uh, you know, we really need some help from the outside because we could use a committee of seven, ten people. We'd like the community to be involved. But for the time being, um, we, we've proposed after discussion that we, as Mr. Davis indicated, a committee of three or five persons to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen on an annual basis, uh, to be, to be determined on the interest and availability of community members. The, uh, as it is proposed now, we can, we can proceed and go with our, uh, applying for the energy grant, uh, process. So I, I make that motion that we, uh, disband the, uh, Green Energy Committee in form as proposed, the, uh, Green Community Committee.
We're gonna have to do two separate votes.
Okay, first motion, this, to disband the Green Energy Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To appoint a new committee called the Green Community Committee as read by the charge.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any questions?
And now we just need some letters of.
Um, do we have official interest of the two individuals, yourself and, um, Trish? Or?
Yes.
You wanna go proceed with those appointments then?
Start with those two? Three?
Pulling in my horns a little bit.
No, that's okay, I understood. No, I'm just, I'm just giving you a. So, alright, well, uh, is there a motion to appoint Joe Reposo?
To appoint Joe and Trish.
Do two separate votes or?
No, that's fine, and these will be through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you again, Joe and Trish.
And one last thing is we would just need a vote. Sorry, a vote from the board to authorize the chair to sign the, uh, certification of the application for the grant, um, as Mr. Reposo said, that the projects, um, that we'll be applying for.
Motion for the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Alright, alright, next is Helen's report.
Uh, just to let the board know, we are, um, for the most part on schedule with the new website. Um, we did review it today. Um, the format looks great, the design, uh, is very simple. Unfortunately, the, the designer is going on vacation for two weeks with his family, so he won't be able to do the, uh, launch of the new site until about January fifth.
Okay.
Uh, we were hoping to get it done before the end of December, but we're gonna be probably a week or so late. And most of the staff will be attending training, most likely on the fifth as well. So that will be coming up in the new year. I'm not sure if you've noticed, when driving through town, that the welcome to Millville sign on Chestnut Hill Road was stolen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, we did have one stolen last year, I think it was a year ago this past summer, um, the one on Lincoln Street, and the insurance company did replace that one.
Is it stolen or did it fall off again?
I, I've been told from the chief of police that it was stolen, so.
Same time that I picked it up, I found it buried under a bunch of leaves. Just so you know.
I'll look again, we didn't see.
Um, we did check.
The value for the metal?
Revenue.
Um, the insurance company did inform us that they would no longer cover these signs. Um, we did check with the sign company and they are not, uh, willing to come out and reinforce them on the posts. So I guess I need a little guidance from the board as to how you'd like to proceed. Right now, we have one post without a sign on Chestnut Hill and I've got some concerns that the other three will disappear as well if we don't do something.
Just to.
Would you like to ask the highway department to see if they can reinforce them? Would you like to take the signs down for the, the winter? Um, would you like me to have the pole removed on Chestnut Hill? Would you like to replace that for, I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, no, I know. I hate to get rid of the poles, they, the, uh, people worked hard to get the funding for them. What do they made, uh, was it aluminum or?
Gosh, I don't even. They're, they're very heavy.
It's like a cast.
Cast?
The problem is they're very poorly installed. They're simply hanging idols.
What if, John, what if?
Take them away.
What if, uh, the, um, closable chain links and then weld them closed? Might have to take a look at it. They could still cut them down, but at least if they have to wear it, they may not, 'cause usually that thieves are lazy.
That sounds like a suggestion, a good suggestion to me to pursue that. Use a heavy link and actually weld it.
Yeah. The threaded ones. The chain links. Close it and then weld it.
Guess I'm on a mission, huh?
I'll help you.
Go on, I'll take a look at it and see if we can secure it.
So we'll leave them as is for the time being? And what would you like to do with the, the empty pole on Chestnut Hill? Do you wanna take that out or?
Did they take the whole, well, they just took the emblem, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll look under the leaves again, quick, and, um, if it's not there, it's not there, I don't know.
That is so petty. Ridiculous.
I know we're a popular town and people wanna hang in their lifeline, but.
I know, but just, it's just, that is, that is so ridiculous. I mean, people go that low and take things like that, I mean. I don't know, I just seem to have a problem with that.
Okay, so we'll, um, I'll put that on the next agenda or maybe, do you want a little more time or for the next meeting?
Well, hopefully we have it done by the next meeting because I don't wanna wait too long because they might be on a roll and just say, okay, we got one, let's go for the, the other three, you know? So I think there's something we'll have to address quite, yes, put it on for next, if you wouldn't mind.
Um, and then in front of you, you have a copy of an email, um, that I received from Attorney Fletcher. Um, this was with respect to the Senior Center, um, the Council on Aging's Regional Transportation, um, that it had years ago with the town of Blackstone. If you recall, the Council on Aging sought guidance from Town Council, the board approval to try to get some of that funding back, the donated funding from the.
How much money was that?
Um, I think we estimated between three and four thousand, but the Board of Selectmen was very clear in that they didn't wanna spend more on legal, you know, than what we're gonna get back.
Is this the finding of the selectmen of Blackstone? Or is this, um, one individual making all, all the shots over there?
I know our, um, our attorney spoke with the town administrator. I, I do not know if he consulted with his board.
That's my point. Did anybody reach out to the, to the selectmen?
That I do not know, but I do know.
Please do me a favor.
Well, our town council did speak with their attorney, so their attorney's recommendation to the board is going to be to not give anything up to the town of Millville, so.
Could you please give me, get me, uh, some kind of a number? I think what we need to do is we need to, and I'll do it, talk to one of the, one of the selectmen over there and, and let them know exactly where we stand with this and why Millville and Blackstone is always seems to be an issue for little things like that which mean a big thing for Millville. We put the money in, we deserve it. We need to have somebody with a clear mind explain it to them and if they still feel the same way, at least we know where the selectmen stand who represent the town of Blackstone, how we feel about it. And I, I really feel there's a disconnection between the administrator over there and the selectmen. I hate to say it, but from past meetings, and I think the board would agree, we find that quite often, what goes on down there, half the story is told. I, I wanna make sure that the selectmen over there have the whole story. And if I have to go there personally and talk to one of the selectmen, I will do so.
Okay, so I, just to.
How does the board feel about that?
No, that's fine, I mean.
Yeah, and Mr. Fletcher's comment is, I think it is fairly obvious that nothing short of litigation will prompt Blackstone to act on Millville's claim, so. To me, he seems fairly confident, but if you'd like me to double-check with the Board of Selectmen directly, I can certainly do that.
Well, the reason, what I'm saying is, he, our attorney is talking to their.
Uh huh. Their counsel.
Not counsel, but he's getting it from, um, not a selectman, the town, um.
Administrator.
Administrator, well, the town administrator directed him to town council, so it's coming from their town council.
I, I understand that, but I'm wondering if the, uh.
Administrator's pushing buttons.
Exactly.
The other course of action it says in here is to bring a small claims action, which can be done without attorney, attorney involvement. I mean, I, I would say that would be the next step after you go.
For the whole.
Have an intervention.
The whole, the whole, uh, just to explain to people listening, the whole issue is when we were partnership with Blackstone with the van, both towns paid their percentage share of van usage, repairs, fuel, and donations that were made to the van's, uh, existence, uh, were entirely kept by Blackstone and Millville didn't see any percent of it. Um, and that's what we're trying to pursue.
Is the donations.
Our fair share of the donations, yes.
Were there, were there any, uh, recorded donations from Millville people into that donated fund? As well as those from Blackstone into it?
That I'm not sure. I know Pat Ledger has, um, a lot more information on that than we do.
You may have a little more legal standing, excuse me, if. You can actually say that, you know, thirty percent of the actual donations of X were indeed made by people from Millville.
Right.
That were as a partner using the van.
Right.
That that would at least give John something to talk about with them.
Yep. 'Cause the, the contract doesn't specify what to do with donations. It doesn't even talk about accepting donations, so that's their argument there. But like you said, yeah, if it's a Millville resident.
If you had some proof that it was done by Millville, at least John's got a talking to.
But it's.
Why you wanna plead with the guys, please, just think about it for us. John can go and say thirty percent of that actually was donated by, and give some proof that it was by Millville Wilkes.
Right. It's just odd that every expense that the van accrued, Millville was expected to pay the, our percentage. But every time a donation came, Millville wasn't expected to receive our, our percentage.
That's right.
Funny how that works, yeah.
We did, um, because we didn't have any knowledge, um, of the accounting of those donations coming in, we did put forth to Blackstone, um, a request for public records, seeking copies of the accountings of the donations received. They in turn, um, after many months, replied to the chairman of the Council on Aging that it was gonna be a considerable cost to obtain those. Um, and, and don't quote me, but I wanna say it was something like five hundred dollars or something to, to get copies of those records. So the, I think the Council on Aging voted at that time to just put the matter on hold 'cause they didn't wanna put any more funding into it, so.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately, what you're saying is absolutely true, but in order for us to get those, we need to get them from Blackstone and they're gonna charge us for that, so.
But if you spend five hundred to get back five thousand, it wouldn't be a bad investment.
Yeah, I, I think it was between three and four thousand. Um, I wanna say thirty-four hundred for some reason. Um, and we've probably put, you know, already maybe one-third of that into legal on this, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how much more you really wanna put into it, but, but, um, I can put some feelers out there and, um, see if this was a vote taken by the selectmen and if so, I can ask for a copy of those minutes. And, uh, we'll get back to you on that.
Alright. Okay. I just don't wanna see this thing go to, uh, just go away. Uh, I, I wanna at least, um, the selectmen, certain selectmen here in my, here this side of the town, of this town, um, exactly how it went down and why sometimes when Millville and Blackstone get together, there's that, there's that little rivalry and the, and the thing is, is because certain people aren't telling the whole story and they're hiding different things. I'm not gonna go into any more of that because we, this board knows and a lot of people know, certain things, when we go up in front of there, certain things aren't brought out, certain things don't come out of the drawer and, uh, it, it just gets very ugly and, and end up why two towns are so far apart. I like to bring the towns more together, but I, I think some, some litigation needs to be said so they understand exactly what happened. I think what I'm saying is some of the selectmen do not have the whole story in Blackstone and they need to have the whole story. Then they can make a sound judgment. That's my point.
Okay.
Um, just to let the board know, the request to all the departments and boards, um, for their preparation and submission of annual reports that went out today, those will be due on February twelfth. And then we will begin the process of, um, putting those books together. Uh, the goal-setting meeting that had been scheduled for December eighth, uh, we canceled that due to illness. Usually those are the second Mondays of the month, that would be January twelfth. I am actually gonna be on vacation that week. Um, so, uh, Mr. Reposo had suggested continuing it until the meeting on the twentieth. But I didn't know if you wanted to do that or if you wanted to address it on the fifth. My thought process was that with the holidays, perhaps the meeting on the fifth will be light and will give you enough time to address, um, the goal-setting things right during the meeting. So if you'd like, we can put that in the agenda. And that's just the, um, the mission and the vision statements.
Alright.
So January fifth.
Yeah, we could do it during the members' forum.
Um, and as I said, I'll be on vacation January twelfth through the fifth, uh, twelfth through the fifteenth. I'm also gonna be out of the office December twenty-third, twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. But I'll, I'll be around if you need me. The board asked me, uh, last month to look into the possibility of changing the town's polling location from this building, um, to possibly St. Augustine's. Um, I spoke at length with the town clerk, she looked into the matter, she. I spoke at length with the town clerk. She looked into the matter. She spoke with the state. She spoke with the church. St. Augustine's is very amenable to us using the facility, and it, it seems like it's something that will be a win-win for both. So we are going to take a little field trip up there and make sure that logistically it'll work out. The only thing the state requires is that we notify the voters of town within thirty days before the election takes place. What we thought we would do is with the census being mailed out in January, we could put that right in the census, that the polling location will be changed. So my hope is that at the next meeting on January fifth, I'll be coming to the board recommending that you vote to change the polling location. In speaking with other towns that do use churches, none of them actually have any type of agreement with the church. St. Augustine said they wouldn't not, they wouldn't be charging us anything, but it leaves me feeling a little uneasy having nothing in writing that they've agreed to this, and not that they would ever do this, but I wouldn't want them to call me a month ahead of the election and say, you know what, we changed our mind, we need to use the hall that day for something else, so. What I would like to do is just seek guidance from town council and perhaps see if he can prepare a simple letter agreement, you know, nothing crazy, not a big contract, but just something in writing that states that they've allowed us to use the facility on these days, you know, at no cost, and that will, you know, will take care of the custodial, the cleanup, the setup. I, I think it's important to put something in writing, but I wanted to see what the board thought first.
I'd make a motion that we do that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yeah, well, the only concern I would have would be, since they're so generous and let them use their facilities over there, we have to make sure that it's cleaned up and put back exactly the way it was before, if not better than, than it was.
Especially the kitchen.
We'll do that.
And that letter's probably a good idea because we cannot control funerals.
True.
You know, they happen when they happen.
And then the last thing I just want to let you know is, we continue to work. Chrissy has done a big part of working with stormwater and fulfilling the requirements on the administrative end of it. One of the requirements is public education, so in your tax bills that are going out the end of December, there's going to be a pink sheet of paper with the information on stormwater, so that's how we're kind of fulfilling that requirement. And that's it, that's all I have.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
All right, old business, we have the Centennial banners. Do you know any? Jennifer's not here, but.
All right.
You don't know anything?
I do. So they all speak up to her.
Ah, just a brief.
We want to purchase six banners and locate them throughout the town, more or less when you come into town, or on the bridge. You know, going to look for sponsors to sponsor each banner.
Right.
That's all, all I know. And we'd like to get them installed as soon as we can, once we find the funding for them. So if you'd like to sponsor one, you certainly can. It's about two hundred and sixty dollars per banner.
Okay.
And they're going to be pearly attached to the poles, so we can slip a new advertisement on and slip the old one off in the future.
Okay.
So they're pretty, pretty nice advertising tools. So you see them in other communities, their cloth or their vinyl.
Yeah.
So we're doing the research now which one to purchase, so if anyone out there would like to purchase one, just let us know and we can certainly do that.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the question was the installation and maintenance of those. Have you determined what or how that will take place?
No.
I know, I know other towns, National Grid adopted the town to do certain.
Right, I think.
Tasks like that.
Your name was mentioned. If you could reach out to somebody, if you know someone who can do that for us, that would be nice, because we don't know anybody.
All right.
That would be the question, can we attach the banners to their poles? And can they do it for us?
Well, fortunately, National Grid's one of the big important people that actually do green energy stuff is a resident in Millville, so that helps a little bit, so I can get a hold of him.
We get that answer, like I said, if anyone wants to sponsor one, that would be great.
Yeah, and I know they usually use the weekend on-call guy to do the little odds and ends for the, in between his service calls, you know?
So if we could.
Because they're usually just looking for things to do, so it might take two weeks to get them all hung, you know, but.
The idea is.
Plus, we need their permission anyway to be on the pole.
The idea is to simply promote the Centennial celebration coming up in two thousand and sixteen. We need to advertise, that's the reason for it.
So I think, in speaking with Mrs. Wing, she was looking for a vote from the board authorizing the committee to proceed, providing all the permissions are received, so would the board like to make a motion to do that?
I'd make a motion. I'll make a motion that we let Congressional Committee move forward on the banner installation.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. All right, that's new, new business. We have.
Taking it home with you?
Last meeting, there was one license not complete, and it was for the Polish-American Club, and I understand all the footwork is done, inspections are all done, so it's just ready for approval.
Motion approved.
Actually, if I could, Mr. Chair, I would just like to read which ones they are. It's one establishment, but actually several licenses for that establishment. It's for a pot, sorry, Polish-American Citizens Club. It's the common vitler license for alcoholic beverages. The common vitler license for preparing and serving foods. The automatic amusement device license for three devices. The pool table license for one pool table, and the entertainment license for dancing, disc jockey, karaoke, and live bands. No Sundays, no forms of nudity, and these are all for two thousand and fifteen.
Can we do them all at once?
Yes, that's fine.
Motion moved ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, on members' forum, we have Joe Reposa and the ambulance service.
The, this all came about when I attended the Municipal Center Building Committee meeting. Hope the chief doesn't leave. The discussion came up regarding, you know, expenses and funding going forward and the need for capital planning and resolving capital planning. In, in this interim period between that time and this weekend, Mrs. Coffin was good enough to give me some information relative to ambulance services in other areas. However, my, my, my point here is that I'm going to follow the Boy Scout motto, be prepared, and that in doing this, we, we need to understand where we're going. So I, I'm going to recommend that we schedule a work, a, a study group or committee or workshop, I should say, before a select board meeting, schedule it with Chief Landry, so that we can get all the insight we need to look forward as to what, how do we prepare going forward. We're going to have to buy an ambulance at some point. You know, how's that ambulance going to be equipped? What kind of service do we need to, to plan for, that kind of thing? So it's invaluable that we, we get the chief's input in, in discussion and a workshop on that very subject.
Is, I don't know if the chief needs clarification. Are you asking him now to do some research in preparation for a meeting, or you'd like to meet with him first?
Meet with him first.
Okay.
That's it?
So, yeah. Do I need to make a motion to do that?
No.
We'll just schedule it.
Okay, let me make a motion, schedule it, talk about it.
Final public forum, I do, I meant to mention in the, in the announcements, I noticed that Santa came down yesterday to check up on, on all of us, and so I just wanted to thank the fire department volunteers that were out there helping Santa get around and cheering up all the kids and getting them all hyped up for next week, and thanks for this, for their time. And.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to go back and address the flag lowering policy, or?
Yeah, we can. We have, the flag warden prepared a, a list of, because we had some confusion in the past year on half-mast and what should be, what shouldn't be, so. Upon the death of a president or a former president, it would be half-staff for thirty days from the day of the death. A vice president, chief justice, retired chief justice, or the Speaker of the House would be ten days from the day of the death. From the day of death until interment would be Associate Justice of Supreme Court, cabinet member, former vice president, president of the Senate, majority leader of the Senate, minority leader of the Senate, majority leader of the House, minority leader of the House, and governor of Massachusetts. From the day of death until intimate would be a U.S. Senator from Massachusetts, a U.S. Representative, Representative Millville. From the day of death until interment would be current selectman, a current Millville police officer, a current Millville firefighter. On a day of interment would be military personnel killed in the line of duty. On day of interment, any current Millville resident who was a chief, who is a military Vietnam or former police fire chief, military veteran or former police or slash fire chief. Also, on the day of interment would be any current Millville resident who was also employed by the town of Millville or elected, appointed to serve on a board commission committee or a council. Also, on day of interment or one specific day to be determined for persons or causes other than those listed. Example, former town employee who is a town resident, current town employee who was, who was not a town resident, to recognize the anniversary of nine eleven, to recognize a local or national tragedy or event, et cetera. And that is the days that the flag will be put in half-staff.
Yep, I just want to point out, Mr. Chairman, the top half of this is actually cover law. So that's just taken from the laws. The bottom half, you can certainly adjust that or change that, you know, if you so choose to do that, but this was taken based on what a lot of the other towns are doing, and then Phil and I sat down and, you know, we tweaked it a little bit and came to this, this agreement.
Phil responsible for making the call and assessing?
Well, I believe through the, through the American Legion, he's, he is informed of any military deaths immediately, and then and then other deaths, I mean, we may, we may have to.
He gets emails from the state and from the governor.
Yeah, and then we may have to tell him of, of the bottom half list of people.
Right, and if you did read the first, the actual lowering policy, we do outline in the last paragraph here clearly that, you know, if somebody should pass on Friday or a weekend, or if we're not aware of it, you know, we'll do the best we can, but we can't guarantee that it will be lowered every single time, you know, as planned, but there may be instances when, you know, when Phil's not available, or we'll, we'll do the best we can. So if the board is okay with that, I would just need a motion to adopt the policy.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, Mr. Chairman, there was just one other item you didn't address. I think it was part of your correspondence, or it might have been something I left on the table tonight. This was from Eric Smith from CMRPC, and this was seeking the town's support or interest in participating in the freight rail planning project. They're just looking for an answer as to whether Millville has an interest in participating in the rail study and feasibility assessment project. And they would like a response by the twenty-ninth.
I don't.
I just, my, my question is, what's involved in, involved with this survey or study? What do you need from the town?
That I, I'm not certain.
That part's not in.
Joe Layden was attending those, yeah, Joe Layden had been attending those meetings.
I don't want to listen to an hour's speech, thank you.
But.
We do have a rail line through town.
Yeah.
That's active, and if there is going to fall, is this any benefit, especially in economic development?
Yeah, I mean, they already run freight through here. But yeah, if it, if it in any way could help us economically with our future plans on, on the new zoning in town.
Right, I don't think it's much work on our part. I think it's just authorizing them to come into town, visit the sites, and get a review of the considerations if we were to open up, maybe another passenger station or something in town, so.
Want to open that, open that right away again? Like that? I mean, I don't have a problem with it myself.
I don't either. I would just bring in more business if they had a train station here, basically that bottom line. That would bring in, that would bring business in because people are going to be parking, people are going to be coming here to go either north or south.
Motion approved, the request in affirmative.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I missed the whole correspondence, why not, why? Okay. That's it. So next we'll do signatures, and then our next regular meeting will be Monday, January fifth at seven. Yep, you can.
The Greenway is going very quickly, and it's going very well. I spoke to DCR today, and I believe they were ahead of schedule. What I learned today was very interesting. They predict one hundred thousand people will use our section of the bike way per year, once it's completed. DCR shares the same concern I have. The bike way is a park. It's not is designated as a park, not so much as a public way. The concern that we both share is the more the hunting that occurs adjacent to the Greenway. Unfortunately, it's going to be my recommendation, not unfortunately, it's going to be my recommendation to write a bylaw for the next town meeting, it's going to prohibit hunting within probably three hundred feet north or south of any point of the Greenway.
Well, somebody in Iannis was just shocked.
You have to, you have to understand.
Isn't there a law already out, it's going to be five hundred feet between any house or any, so why do we need another law?
There's two laws. There's one law five hundred feet from a residence.
Right.
And the other law is one hundred and fifty feet from a public way.
Do you want to make it three hundred feet from?
Unfortunately, there's, there's a lot of land there, so when you walk down the Greenway towards the bridge, it's more than five hundred feet from any home, or more than one hundred feet from any road, so.
So would you say that, let me ask another question. Does that mean you're going to have to post it?
Absolutely, we'll post it, and once it's posted, hopefully DCR will help us with that posting.
I'm just saying, because that's going to cost us money for signage.
I understand that, but at the end of the day, what I've been noticing, there's a lot of hunting activity at that location. Sadly, a lot of those people are not Millville residents. I've stopped people from New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island, all week long. Last week, DCR was there, providing some enforcement duties. Last week, DCR was there, uh, providing some enforcement duties. I believe they issued more than one thousand dollars in violations to hunters that are not licensed or didn't have the reflective gear. We've done the same thing, we actually did it this past Saturday.
Does that, does that surprise you probably?
No, it doesn't surprise me, but the bottom line is, especially, especially during shotgun season, uh, the new technique is five to ten hunters at one time, and DCR's concern is they hoard, herd all of the deer towards the river, and then the deer have no escape, and they're more or less.
Free for all.
It's a free-for-all, and they're shooting six, seven deer at one time. Giving away the bike, uh, bike trail or Greenway trail goes directly through that area. Shotgun, uh, slug can travel up to a mile, so you can just think about having five or seven people shooting, recklessly, recklessly sometimes at these deer, uh, which, what the outcome can be. The Greenway is, is designed to be used all season long, as a bike trail, a walking trail, snowshoes, skiing. They expect to see that trail used very often, and we would be negligent if we don't protect the people walking on that trail all season long.
I don't blame you.
The bottom line is, uh, we have some very professional hunters, we have some very reckless hunters, and it's that one person that's gonna cost somebody their lives. So I think we'll be reckless if we don't prepare that type of legislation to prohibit hunting. I'm thinking three hundred feet north or south of the Greenway, which, which would be fairly, a, a safer zone, if I may, so I think that's what we're gonna need to create. I understand how we'll need a bylaw for that, so I'll write that up for the next town meeting to get it enforced and publicized.
I think you oughta go the same as the House.
Well, let me say this, that's only my recommendation, I'm certainly in favor of going further.
That's what I'm saying, I think it should be the same as the House.
It would make the same as a resident.
I, I.
Five hundred.
I believe it should be, um.
Well, why don't you write it like that?
Whatever your pleasure is.
I mean, there's gonna be kids.
There's gonna be, unfortunately.
They're shorter, harder to see, but they'll pay.
There's no, there's no procedure where we mandate people wear reflective clothing. So when that Greenway opens, people walk their dogs, they take walks themselves, there'll be kids on their bicycles, there'll be kids on their snowshoes, it's not a safe environment.
No.
And DCR will prepare a letter of support if you need that, I spoke to them today. But the bottom line is to protect this community and protect our residents, we need that type of legislation. Especially when I see who we attract, uh, we attract more residents outside of Millville than we attract Millville residents.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Last week, I, it was a group of fifteen, probably more than half from outside the town. So we really can't allow them to come here and threaten our quality of life, uh, because they, they enjoy the sport of hunting. There's other places to do it more safely.
Yeah.
But near the bike trail or Greenway is not one of them. So I'll prepare that legislation for the town meeting, and I'll simply leave that item, the feet, blank.
Five hundred.
So if you wanna go five hundred, seven fifty, four thousand, whatever you'd like to do, you can do.
Well, I wouldn't do any less than five hundred, to be very honest with you.
You know, if, uh, kids on snowshoes, they'll wander off the path. Absolutely. Yeah, just, they'll go exploring. We had a operation on Saturday, we drove throughout the town, and we found people with no license once again. And they were for, they were from out of Millville, so we're very, uh, interested in that. They certainly wanna come here because there's an abundance of deer.
Now, when you catch somebody like that without the license, chief, do you automatically take their firearm and give them a summons?
Depends on the circumstances, uh, most of the time, we'll take the weapon and give them a violation.
Okay.
Sometimes, uh, we'll allow them to keep the weapon, but we'll give them the violation, give them the leave, that depends on the circumstances. But that's one thing I won't announce it now because it's gonna come, and I would hope the board selects.
See, just like that statement that Joe just made, he goes, kids go on shoes and they kinda wander off the trail. I don't feel three hundred feet is enough, I think five hundred feet is basically a good start. I, I would like to even make it more, but I think in, in reality, there's five hundred feet per house. Me living in the back where I live, even five hundred feet isn't enough. I got guys coming from men in the back and shooting, and, and it, it's.
I would encourage everyone to use the Greenway, I was there this week, and it's absolutely beautiful. From one end, from Uxbridge, all the way to the bridge, I was very surprised, pleasantly surprised how beautiful it's going to be. So the last thing we need is that type of, uh, hunting situation near the Greenway. So just let the town know that's gonna happen, and I hope that the town meeting goes through. Simply protect our residents and the children of this town.
So it stops at the bridge?
No, it's gonna continue over the bridge into Blackstone. This trail goes from the rare McDonald's all the way through Blackstone, through Unsocket, through Cumberland Lincoln, all the way to Cold State Park in Narragansett. That's how far it goes, I've been on it myself. The Millville side is, is, is gonna be, from what I understand, the most historic part because of the bridge, and when you're spending on that bridge, it's gonna be amazing how well it's gonna look. So the scenery is absolutely gorgeous with the river and falls.
I spent quite a bit of time.
It's gonna be incredible, so I don't think we should allow anything to ruin that, but I think with that type of postseason. Whatever board determines, I'm good with.
I think it's a good idea, but I think when you write it though, I think it should be no less than five hundred. I have a feeling it's not gonna, it's gonna be more than that, with people.
Wants to agree, yes, Terry.
Just a question, now, what, what are the other towns, don't you?
I, I did speak to DCR about that. Right, they were, they were telling me a lot of the Greenway, most of the Greenway go into communities that are, are larger and have more of an infrastructure, and they don't necessarily have a problem with hunting. It goes through Millbury, it goes through towns more densely populated, which they don't allow hunting anyway. We're really rural, so it's kind of a unique.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Problem for us, so it's, uh. Well, it's not, it's not the, um, Uxbridge is the, the last section of the Greenway that's not designed. So Uxbridge will be the last phase of the Greenway, so there's nothing. I will check on that.
I'm just curious, it would be nice to be consistent.
All I know is. I, I don't think we're looking for consistency, I think we have to design it for what works best for Millville, what we believe is right. Some communities, they think three hundred feet, some, they think five hundred. I personally agree with Mr. Laro, five hundred or more, because it's gonna take that one incident.
Yep.
Of somebody walking on that Greenway.
What just happened in Hyannis, right, this week, last week?
Like I said, a shotgun slug will travel up to a mile.
Yeah, fortunately, the guy didn't get killed, but it did.
So that's, um, something to look forward to for the next meeting.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, that's the law, that's the book. Don't leave. There're eight more. We got five more here, at least. We're on top of that, all right. I couldn't find the top. That was the problem. What's your sticky thing?
Don't go messing Helen's stuff up.
See? This stuff that's made in China, now, it doesn't work quite as good as it used to.
While you're, uh, finishing up signing, I'll ask, is there any particular spot, um, that the selectmen would like to see this?
We're gonna leave that up to you, how's that? Not a good spot, you're here all the time, you know where they, where they look.
Is there room in, in there by the?
Yeah, we can hang it up in the business.
Business office.
That's where most people.
Okay, so, you know where to hang it. Is that bike way almost done? The bike way? Yeah, it's almost.
Well, it's, it's all cut, and, uh.
I think it'll check it out this weekend. I did, what, do they pave it? Make sure you wear reflective.
Yeah.
Yes, 'cause it's not paved.
It's gonna be, uh. It's gonna be ten feet wide.
Yeah, black powder's right.
But it's, it's like sixty feet wide.
Yeah, oh, it's wide, I know.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it looks, looks real nice.
They're all lined up on one forty-six this morning. Oh, yeah. Boy, they're all over the place. Is it still black powder right now?
Started.
No.
Started. Shotgun season ended Saturday, black powder's starting Sunday.
And then how long is it, when's hunting season over?
I'm just saying, it's not like a month, but. End of very end of December, which never really is over, because it goes to, uh, you can always shoot coyote.
Yeah.
Fox, turkey, there's different times in the year for different animals as well.
Right.
So realistically, hunting season's over here.
But deer season's the biggest.
Deer season's the biggest.
Fox, three sixty-five, those, those guys are terrorists. Jerry, you must have, but, you have issues with your chickens with that, oh, they're pretty good?
Do I, I don't know, no.
Uh, no, that's not what I'm asking, that's not what I'm asking.
Do the foxes create?
Fox?
Yeah.
Fisher cat?
Yes. Do you? I know one of my neighbors ran one old, it was tracking.
It was a trailer. It won't be that by us, yeah, they're, they're tough fishing cats, they're tough.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Tough cat.
But you have a chance to pick them, if you can, take a walk, you, it's amazing.
So you've been, you guys have been, the police department's been down there monitoring some of the.
We were there Saturday, correct? But DCR was there the week before.
These, these guys must have been surprised to see you guys flying.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, they, they, now they're gonna turn around, they're gonna say, okay, now the police, we're, we're gonna have to find a new location because.
I don't have a problem if they're licensed and follow the rules.
Yeah.
But if they don't follow the rules, they're not licensed, and they're not wearing reflective colors, I have a problem.
Right, but once they know that there's a presence, they're gonna behave.
They're gonna, they're gonna leave because they're not gonna, they don't wanna, they wanna.
Well, we really can't destroy an asset, the Greenway, Greenway will be an asset.
Bobby, miss one.
Don't worry, I won't make it away to get away this evening.
We had to wait for the last signature.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye.
All in.